And the pledge allegiance today that will be led by Mistress Eric Shaw. You'll please stand at this time.
If you'd like, Dear heaven and father, thank you for this lovely day you've got out there. It's nice and warm out there, nice and chilly in here. We appreciate all you've done for us and the day you've created. Let us lead this college and make the decisions in your way and like, and for the bestment, the betterment of everyone involved. In the Lord's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get things rolling today with the approval of the agenda. Is everybody good with that?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented to us.
We've had a motion made, is there a second on that? Second by Mr. Williams, any discussion? Okay, this will be a voice vote, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, moving on next, number three, approval of the minutes, consideration and approval of the April Board Meeting Minutes.
I'm with you for that.
We've had a motion to approve, is there a second for that?
Sure.
And second by Mr. Shaw, any discussion? We'll move forward, a voice vote on this as well, all those in favor of the approval of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we move on next to the consideration of the college financial report, and we'll turn the program over to you, Charlotte.
Thank you. The first part of the financial section, we look at the year-to-date comparison from this year to last year as of March 31st. So very similar to what you've seen, same pattern you've seen in previous months. Tuition and fees, trying to be right along. Of course, this is, this is March, so we've still got a registration going on for summer that will continue to push that number up, so that's good news. Other areas, very similar, Student Aid, of course, is going to follow that same sort of enrollment pattern. Big difference there is in your grants, federal state grants, much lower this year than last year. We have some very successfully expired last year, so that's going to drive a big difference from one year to the next. The next page then looking at expenses, again, the same pattern that you've seen in previous months. Very much right on track, salaries and benefits, ahead of last year reflecting the pay increases that were in this year's budget, saving a little bit of money on operating expenses, and then scholarships, of course, again, like I said, a little bit ahead, following the enrollment patterns. And then on the third page there, revenues, money expenses as our changes in net position, you see we're quite a bit below last year, but very comparable once you factor out those one-time differences related to those grants. So that's supposed to be driving that big difference. Following that, the next two pages are just the details of those same numbers. And then if you'll turn over to our next graph, the budget to actuals, these are preliminary April numbers, which is eighty-three percent of the fiscal year. After looking at our revenue, again, tuition and fees tracking very well, is over ninety percent recognized, again, still enrolling for the summer term, so that's looking very optimistic in that area. Again, the Student Aid following that same pattern, as well as auxiliaries and so forth, following that same expected pattern for the year. On the bottom half of the page, sort of using that eighty-three percent as a guide, you can see most of your categories are out of the low that spot. Notable differences in student services and scholarships, which are actually called scholarship-related. So that's a normal pattern for that too, scholarships falling more semester to semester. They're also contractable with us. Following that then is just the same numbers, just in the detail. And then looking at the capital budget, again, very similar to what you've seen in previous months. I think really hugely new there. And then looking at our cash position, looking at the pie graph, this is our cash position beginning of May. Again, you can see we're doing well there as well. So looking to have a pretty strong end to our fiscal year, hopefully. Following that, we have our certificates of deposit held by the college. We do have one coming up for renewal, we have it out to bid right now, so we'll be renewing that three-month, five-million-dollar CD here soon. You'll see that on next month's report. And then following that on our bid report, we are, we don't have this published yet, but we are about to publish the banking services bid. Any day now, we're just finishing up the wording on it. We are past our clear when you know on banking services, so we are required to bid that out. That would be on depository services as well as the range. And then finally, you see a list of budget amendments, nothing really major there, most of it is just various for routine stuff where we've filled vacant positions or just had unexpected expenses. And that concludes my report, any questions?
Questions for Charlotte this time, any discussion of questions? We will entertain a motion to approve the consideration of the college financial report. Motion right there, is there a second?
I'll second.
And for seconds, aye. This is also a vote, a voice vote, all those in favor of consideration of the college financial report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Charlotte, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on now to the President's Report, Dr. Payne.
Thank you, sir. So, as you guys might recall, we are involved and enrolled in the Higher Learning Commission Student Success Academy. This is an opportunity through the Higher Learning Commission to sit and focus on a wide array of data and develop and determine a quality initiative, which is a standard part of our accreditation process. So today I'm going to ask Dr. Mary Beth Payne, our Chief Institutional Effectiveness Officer, Accreditation Liaisonant, to introduce the Student Success Academy team. And take it from here.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Payne. Well, the college has just completed the first of our three-year commitment in the Higher Learning Commission Student Success Academy. And throughout this past year, the academy team members have been highly focused on this project and have put in a lot of time and effort. And I just wanted to point out, this is in addition to their normal duties of teaching and directing and coordinating and what they do here at the college. So they put in a lot of time and effort. So a few of them will be here today with us to tell you about the academy work. But first, I want to recognize all eight members of the team. First, Director of Academic Assessment, Mr. Frank Ludwig. Credit Agent Coordinator and Executive Assistant to the Chief Institutional Effectiveness Officer, Ashley Vernon. Assistant Professor of Early Chocolate Development, Heather Corman. Director of Enrollment Services and Student Development, Randy Brooks. Director of Distance Learning, Dr. Ryan Higsey. Associate Professor of English, Jason Howard. Instructor of Life Science, Kelly Hastings could not be with us because she is administering the exam. This is our final tweet. Coordinator of Testing Services, Cassie Knox. So these are the eight members of the team. So thank you to all of you. And now we're going to move on to present on our first academy experience. I'd like Mr. Frank Ludwig to come up.
So the academy office is a very structured process that is supported by HLC scholars and mentors. And the first step in that is a series of inventories, and the first of which we conducted in fall of '23, which is a data inventory. The goals there are to gather everything we need to examine from a very high-level student cohort success here at Three Rivers. And the second goal is to identify different ways we might disaggregate this meaningfully to get information on various sub-populations. And then finally, is to really try to identify the data that is most meaningful and most indicative of student success or challenges there. The team of eight then traveled in October to Schaumburg, Illinois, where we were able to take part in a series of activities along with several other colleges. I think there were eight other institutions that were there. And we were able to interact with scholars and mentors, also interact with the other colleges, and take a look at this data inventory in detail and discuss it among ourselves, and also to share some of those discoveries with the scholars, mentors, and other institutions that were there working on this. And then for the next step, Ashley will tell me about the next.
Hello, as part of our academy work, the team expressed interest in holding focus groups. So this spring, we held three focus groups with area high school students who actually enrolled in online dual-credit or dual-enrollment courses at Three Rivers College. The purpose of the focus group interviews were to gather feedback about the quality of our dual-credit online courses with specific interest in how do students access and use technology and overall quality of the courses. So the members of the interviewing team was actually myself, Mr. Ludwig, Cassie Knox, and Randy Brooks. The students are anonymous, of course. We promised them that they would be anonymous in all reports so that we could give their honest feedback. So in March, April, and May of this semester, we went to Popper Glove High School where we interviewed six students, Sikes Town High School where we also interviewed six students. And then we had three students from Neelyville meet us here on campus, and we spoke to them as well. During these interviews, the students were asked questions about how and where they access their course during the school day, what type of technology they use, including any sort of issues that might arise related to technology, whether they felt the course outcomes were clearly communicated to them, how they experienced interacting with their instructors and the feedback they received, just a broad spectrum of their experience in the online courses. So we're still reviewing the results of those interviews and looking for potential areas of improvement, but we did receive a lot of positive feedback. Out of all the students who participated, all fifteen of them, they all said that their overall experience with Three Rivers was positive and that if they had to, they would choose to come back to Three Rivers again.
And now to present on the second academy experience, Heather Corman.
So Frank kind of touched on, you know, that we went to Schaumburg in October, and so for our second meeting, then we went to in March. It was a two-day academy. But before we had, before we went, they, HLC requested an initiatives inventory be completed that we worked on during the spring of '24. And that inventory included reviewing student success and retention initiatives that had already been established and had been in place for the last five to ten years here at the college. And then we had some more current ones that we were looking at as far as Rader Connect, which is our early alert system that we use with our students. The implementation of the tier tuition model, day-one access of the college textbooks and materials, and online point-of-defense, the Title III grants, and our Achieve Program. So in addition to the HLC inventory, the institution is currently serving, is examining how we are currently serving our students in the various populations of students that we have. So we are exploring the context goals and impact of initiatives that are currently in place to support that student success. And so the goals that we have are to discover the range of targeted strategies the campus has in place to support student success, determine if the initiatives' objectives reflect the institution's priorities, student populations, and definitions of student success, and identify additional opportunities to meet students' needs. So you can kind of see how that plays into some of the things that Frank and Ashley shared. So while we were at the roundtable, all eight members were present, and it included a roundtable that we focused on that initiatives inventory, and we were able to meet with the academy scholars and mentors. And while we were there, they led the team in analyzing our findings, looking at all the information that had been compiled, and then kind of directing us on our next step, which is the infrastructure inventory, which we'll be working on in September, when we come back in September '24 in the fall. And that's going to be exploring the policies and practices of the college and how they align in providing for student success.
And then to present on the student services areas and initiatives panel presentations, Randy Brooks.
Okay, so over the last semester beginning in January, we've actually had five half-day meetings to go over some of the initiatives that we are beginning to identify that we just need to dig a little bit further into. So the purpose of these panel presentations was to provide the team with information focused on how each of these service areas and retention initiatives at the college both align and support our students. So the presentations that we went through were for academic life strategies course, which is ACAD 101, that's a program requirement course that all of our students take here. The Achieve Program, of course, which is federally funded trio, a program that serves about two hundred and fifty students. Athletics, developmental education, disability services, dual-credit and dual-enrollment, external locations, the Office of Distance Learning, which of course manages platform, course technology, Rader Connect, which Heather mentioned is our early alert system, the Registrar's Office, the Rattlin Library, Student Accounts, the College Store, Tutoring and Learning Center, and Veteran Services and Financial Aid. After each of the panel discussions or presentations, the team was able to ask questions to the person presenting or the presenter to gain further insights. This is really helping us hone in on all of the ways that these specific areas are interacting, both with students, with faculty, and with staff here on campus, and how they're communicating out regarding their services. This was a very, very positive experience for, I think, both the presenters and the team members. And of course, the team members were able to gain some additional knowledge and insight to help us make more informed decisions as we are planning our proposed quality initiative.
So that kind of ended up year one. I don't know if you have any questions for the team members, but the next steps are going to be combining analyzing all this information and data that was gathered by the team throughout the year for the next steps in the academy, which will begin in September this fall. So we'll go move into the second year, which the second year is really the part where the team will be developing what that quality initiative is for student success and retention. So does anyone have any questions for the team members or for me? All right, well, thank you very much. Are you ready? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. While I do want to recognize the entire team, they have spent a lot of time. They take this work very seriously, and they have been very dedicated in moving this project along. Moving to the next event, we were fortunate to be selected by Governor Carson as one of the stops on his book signing tour. We were able to give him a tour of campus to show him some of the improvements that we've made from some previous allocations. So all in all, a very successful day, and I believe the governor left pleased. And then our music department, under Professors White and White, put on Step Fair as their annual musical, and then finished the semester with their final recital, Spring Concert, both vocal and instrumental. And I'm going to ask Mr. Corey Reynolds if he will come forward and speak about music bingo and potentially those snaky costumes that someone was brave enough to wear.
So it was a nineties theme, and that's kind of what you see, I think, captured there. We had approximately one hundred and eighteen participants. That was about thirty more than what we had in the fall. Funds raised went to mental health awareness. We want to thank Haven House, SEC, and Missouri Highlands for sponsoring the prizes and tables, and DJ Devon Barnes for donating his services. And unfortunately, CJ Jameson wasn't able to be here today. She really should be the one presenting. She worked very hard on this event to make it a success, and she is not able to be here today because of bereavement and loss, so our prayers should be with her. But I wanted to definitely make sure that she was acknowledged and given the credit that she is owed. Can't say enough how much we appreciate her. She's a go-gooder, so that's about all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. And I'm going to call Ms. Catherine Clark to the podium to talk about the work that's been done in our ag program and at the farm.
So I've kind of made a little, like, five-point four breakdown of what we've done at the farm. I think you guys have some questions while I kind of present on what's going on out there. If you haven't had a chance to stop in, stop in, you might be amazed. It's been a while since we've been out there. We've cleaned it up a lot, and it's great.
No more dirt?
Huh?
No more dirt?
No more dirt, no. It's really pretty out there. And I have to brag on Mr. Boxton, our farm manager, who's done a wonderful job of helping out and getting a great firm established out there, so we have a great cow calf operation out there. And our production goals are basically what would be beneficial for a student if they're going to do a cow calf operation here in southeast Missouri. So looking at animals that are going to be heat tolerant, you know, fly tolerant, all that good stuff. We've got some really good looking calves right now. You can see in the middle picture, we have an herder bull. Beautiful, and curly is what I call him, he's awesome. So really working on building our herd out there. It's really cool to see our first three-R brand on our replacement hedges that were born on the farm, so starting to raise our own breed, our own beef up there that is Three Rivers born and raised. Students are the ones that make management decisions. So you can see we sold twenty-two heads last year. The ones that were sold, majority of them was our students going through and saying, yeah, let's sell this one, or this one, yeah, this one's fine. She's a little angry, yeah, let's get rid of her. Or, you know, we went through and pride-checked them. Like, if they weren't open, that's the ones we got rid of. So a lot of student-led decisions, which is good, and that's one of our goals, is making sure that our students are getting that hands-on experience, especially a lot of them are rotted crop kids, so cattle side of things that they've never really experienced. So it's great seeing them in there, giving those shots, working the cattle, have a better respect for the beef side of the industry. Partnerships and events, we've been trying to get more people out there. It's a great facility to have more events, and so we're trying to get as many events out there as we can. Trying to build kind of the type of people we like to eat. We're a close family, so trying to build that family atmosphere with our students and faculty. So we've had different cookouts out there, planning more cookouts for the next year. We had area bar marketing that we hosted for the EFA. Forage, Mr. Boxton, his kids are in forage, and he's a wonderful cattlemen. And he's worked with Children's County Forage to offer some classes out there, so they have students out there that are coming in for the elementary, trying to kind of recruit to along the way, but they're very appreciative of it. The extension's very appreciative of what we have going on. Heroes to Hives is a great program, we've got bee hives down at the farm. They manage it, they can do a program online, and then they come out and meet once a month. And they have, we actually have one coming in from Marshfield, Missouri, another one that comes down to St. Louis that teaches the class. So on a Saturday once a month, they go out there and bring the veterans out there. They have a store down there with their store and their beef stuff in, and then they'll go out, and every month they have a different thing with different veterans. I've went to a couple of them, and every month is kind of a different group. It's not the same people, it's different people coming out there. And not only the bees, but they're enjoying the animal side too. You can tell that they really enjoy being out there on the farm, along with the beef side of things. Missouri Department of Conservation, we teamed up with them, trying to get that connection going again for our forestry program side. They did the chronic waste testing site, they were very appreciative of it because the people came in and drove back out, was really easy for them, and helped out. Once again, bringing more people on the farm, making more people realize what we have going on out there. And then also, I forgot to put on there, we're going to be hosting district's equine contest next spring. So that's looking at almost two hundred students from the district, southeast district, coming in on our farm, and teaming up with Rodeo, helping out Chad, Chad and Amanda are amazing. I mean, it's a great, we have a great partnership going on between Chad and Amanda and Boxton and me of getting things out there, getting events out there, and utilizing that facility. You can see some of the goals we're looking at, and kind of going forward, the things we're going to focus on for the next year. I would like to, we're working on, we've got an area set out for trying to put some strawberries and blueberries out there. I have still a science class, I have planned science classes, kids that want to sit, let's do a PowerPoint, trying to utilize some more hands-on stuff for them to do. Those are crops that usually we can kind of get them established through the school year, and hopefully maybe starting at the end of the school year is why we picked those. And, you know, I've kind of leaned on some help with different extension, horticulture specialists and things, and that's what they recommended too on the management side of things. But, you know, PH is a huge part of blueberry crops, you know, still getting those educational moments out there along with it. The classroom, I think he's already discussed the classroom with Farm Crit, and we are greatly appreciative of that, I'm so excited about. And then the summer, we're working on our water lines, pipe fence finished from the roadway. You can see there'll be more pipe fence being put up, so predominantly that. So we're working on getting some trees cut down that are dead, so they're just cleaning it back up, making it look really good out there. And then signage and outdoor lighting, so we've got different areas we're focusing on, but we'll go in the right direction, definitely. It's great to see it growing, it's great to see it changing. Like I said, that herd is awesome, Rodeo team's kicking butt too, so it's good to see it having them out there doing their thing. So that's our goal, wanting more people out there, we're wanting people to appreciate and enjoy it just as much as we do, that's quite a lot, hands-on, getting them that experience. Questions you guys have?
Is there any dirt? Yes, it is a dirt-free ranch. You can come out at any point in time. And I'm sure that Mark will absolutely arrange for you to participate in the pride-checking.
Yeah, I didn't know what that was, I had to ask.
But we are more than, in fact, anyone, but trustee Shaw especially, we would love to have participate in this particular farm activity.
Ma, it's going to be hard to pass it right now.
It's interesting to see the students like that. I mean, we cut pasture, you can come up that day too.
Oh, God.
We'll save you a student here for that one, how about that?
They have a meal right there. Well, how was the curtain?
Thank you, Ms. Mark. And I am very pleased to announce that the Teacher of the Year and Adjunct of the Year are Mr. Corey Reynolds, who you just saw present, and Ms. Emily Thurman, Adjunct instructor in English. Both of these dedicated professionals were recognized and selected by their peers, then honored locally, and they will also be honored at the Missouri Community College Association Annual Meeting in November. And I'm pleased to present Dr. Samia DeSaro. She is our distinguished alumnus for 2024. We had her reception on May 6th. It was well-attended and a big hit, and she, of course, will be with us as our commencement speaker this Friday evening. On May 10th, we held our Student Excellence Awards. This is the kickoff, if you will, to our commencement proceedings. This is the first event where we recognize outstanding achievement amongst our students. These students are recognized by individual faculty members, and then we hold a ceremony on the Friday preceding commencement to honor their achievements. Then some upcoming events. May 17th, 2:00 p.m. in the Tennant Center will be our next RN Tenny. We have a full house, it's always a great ceremony. Then, of course, following that, at 6:00 p.m., what we have all been working for the entire academic year commencement, our commencement ceremonies will take place on May 17th. EMS Week, Emergency Services Week, our celebrations for that will be May 21st, 12:00 to 3:00. We'll be holding that at the parking lot by the Chris Technology Center and around the firehouse. And then Project Drive, this is a grant-funded program. We are offering free construction training for any May 2024 graduates. So the entire program is absolutely funded, there is no expense to any student. Wonderful opportunity to break into a career that will serve our students well. Then we will be closed for Memorial Day, May 27th. Then we will be closed for Memorial Day, May twenty-seventh, and our summer hours will begin June third, so we'll move to ten-hour days, Monday through Thursday, and be closed on Fridays. Then June thirteenth, we are hosting our next mental health conference, 8:30 AM to 2:00 PM in Robert W. Plaster Free Enterprise Center, Room 108, which is the Wexner Hall. Then June twenty-first is the annual, the eleventh annual Three Rivers Endowment Trust golf tournament. All proceeds benefit students and operations of the Endowment Trust. That, Mr. Chair, is the president's report, and we do have executive session. Any questions for Dr. Payne? Okay, we, we're going to executive session, we will need a motion to go into executive session in a second.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Amber, make the second, which will be a roll call vote to go into executive session.
Trustee Featherstone?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Sure.
Trustee Williams?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in executive session. Go back and open session number seven, consideration approval of all personnel actions and associated documents.
Dr. Hager, I would like to make a motion that we approve all personnel decisions and attach those associated documents there, too.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. How about a second on that one?
Sure.
Second on Mr. Williams. Any discussion on this this time? If not, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Featherstone?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Absolutely.
Trustee Williams?
Next board meeting will be Wednesday, June nineteenth, 2024. I hope to see you guys at commencement on Friday. Any other discussion concerns, anything for the group?
I don't have any.
We're going to do the password one. We're going to meet over at the gym this time of steam.
Yeah.
And there's a password to get you through security department. Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
All, this will be a voice vote, all those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's meeting adjourned.